Welcome back from the weekend.
I see Commissioner Cruz in the hallway.
Oh, alright, let's wait for... As the priest announced before Mass Sunday, he said, "All of you people that are praying for rain, you can stop now."[26.59][26.59](Laughter.)
Whoever's praying for rain can pray for my bank account.[34.36][34.36](Laughter.)
Yeah.
Switch topic.
Commissioner Cruz requested that Cody come over, so if we could wait on her, I think, because he's gonna give us kind of an overview of what's happened and then I guess what's gonna happen again.
Yeah. I forgot my crystal ball, but we'll do the best we can.
Been doing pretty good so far.[62.01][62.01](Laughter.)
I like the FEMA website, I just don't know how to read it very well.
There's some that are a little less user-friendly than others.
Well, you can see we're in on a lake or a town.
Mm-hmm.
I can't really tell.
Ms. Cruz?
Hello.
Okay, we have three things today. Cody's gonna give us a storm update later today, and any other questions you may have of him, and then Diana Shun and Vicki are here today to talk about child abuse cases and trends in data analysis that you guys wanted a few weeks ago, and we've scheduled them, and then Glenda is going to talk about some corrections budget issues. So with that, Cody, go ahead and get us started.
I'm gonna pan these out for those of you with your backs to the monitors there, what I'm gonna show up here for everybody else. I wanna start with the risk that we have for severe weather later today, and I'm looking here at the Storm Prediction Center's website, and I click on the interstates, it's kinda a little bit easier there to pinpoint where Wichita and Sedgwick County are, where 135 and I-35 split, and you can see that on the graphic I gave you. The overall threat today is enhanced, and that can sound kinda strange if you're not sure what they're, or kinda worrisome, I should say, if you're not familiar with their coding. It's kind of in the middle, you can go anywhere from marginal to a high threat, enhanced threat is somewhere in the middle, and if we look on the individual categories, we'll see that the biggest thing that we're at risk for is the threat for large hail, two inches in diameter, which is roughly, they call that now hen/egg sized hail. We do have a slightly smaller threat, a 15% threat for high winds that could reach 70 miles per hour. The tornado threat is out there, it's not as high, we're just barely on the edge of the 10% chance for tornado threat, but most of Sedgwick County is under a 5% chance, which is statistically significant when you're talking tornadoes in the Weather Service world. So it's not something that we're, you know, raising a red flag and warning everybody that, "Oh, my gosh, this is going to be a really bad day," but the potential is there, so it's one of those days that we'll need to keep an eye on the weather situation later today, especially if conditions start to change rapidly and worsen, and especially for those departments that would have people working outside, first responders, public works, that type of thing. As far as the flooding goes, the situation has continued to improve over the weekend. Most of the rivers and streams in our county have gone back within their banks. The only flood warning that remains is for the Big Arkansas River down in southern Sedgwick County around Derby and Mulvane. Gimme just a second here, I should've had that page pulled up, sorry about that. Sorry, gimme just a second here, getting closer. Alright. The yellow dots that you can see on the screen right now indicate streams and rivers that are near flood stage but below, and they are falling. The ones down here by Derby and Mulvane, if I pull on that, up that one especially, you can see that Derby is just barely, and I mean just barely into the minor flood stage, and it is expected to fall later today and get back within its banks. If we look just a little bit downstream at Mulvane, we'll see something roughly similar, that it's projected to kinda plateau just barely above the flood stage and then fall later today. And that is supposed to have taken into account any expected rainfall later this afternoon. Now, these river forecasts especially are very dynamic, so I expect these to change a little bit later today, and we might see a slight elevation in the forecast, but nothing significant, it will stay in the minor level. Cheney Lake continues to remain at full output capacity, both gates are still fully open, but we're slowly gaining ground on Cheney Lake, it's just barely above the magic number of 1,429 feet. Now, once we get below 1,429, they won't immediately cut off water outflow, because they'll have to allow the lake to drain some more to allow for additional storage capacity of any rain that falls within the next week, but they will have the option then of lessening the impact, and so the North Fork of the Nyniscot River will have a chance to get back within its banks. Just real quickly, wanna give you a couple stories of things that happened over the weekend with flooding, and they were actually both in your district, Commissioner Cruz. First one occurred on Sunday afternoon, and it was at Hat McLean Park in Park City. There was a 13-year-old boy who tried to ride his bike across the low-water bridge there that was completely underwater with a very strong current, and predictably, he did get swept away. Fortunately, there was another teenage boy there, about 16-years-old, who saw what had happened, and according to the Park City Police Department's report, he ran downstream, crawled out on a branch over the creek, and was able to pull that young man to safety and obviously saved his life. I'm sure that the city or the department will do something to honor him, because that was definitely a heroic effort. And our everyday heroes as well, we're involved in another water rescue up near Valley Center on the Little Arkansas River. The report came in of two gentlemen who had been canoeing on the river, and their boat capsized. One of them was able to make it to safety, the other one got hung up in some trees, and Station 32 firefighters, Bernal, Byer, Ayakusi, White, and Captain J. So, all performed a swift water rescue, and were able to extricate the second victim on that. So that's kinda the broad overview. Did you have any specific questions about anything that I hadn't covered? Yes, Mr. Spears?
I have one. I hear stories, I just wanna verify if you've heard any of this, certain subdivisions around the area... Can you say it? Oh, I'm sorry. Certain subdivisions around the area have pumps that pump water from the subdivision over into the floodway, and we're hearing reports from some people that they think some of these pumps have been turned off because the floodway's so high that they don't wanna pump any more water into it. Have you, can you verify that, or do you have any knowledge of that?
No knowledge whatsoever, that's the first I've heard of it.
Okay, thank you.
So, on that note, who handles these pumps? Is that a county thing or a city thing, or who?
It's not us, or I wouldn't know, because I'm gonna try to find out. Probably flood control, I would say, the people at flood control, if it's pumping water into the floodway. So we're on that and trying to find out.
So can you, I just, I wanna know, in my neighborhood specifically, I woke up, I have water in my basement, and it's not going away, and so all weekend long, I have been, like everybody else, I'm sure we're good, trying to get the water out. Well, it's not going away, and so I woke up and there was this message, and I told my neighbors this morning that I would address it here so that we can all discuss it, and here's what it said. It said something about the pumps, whoever controls the pumps are backflowing the pumps and creating a positive ground pressure because they feel the big ditch is going to have a breach, which is creating our cracks to fill the basements. So I don't know what that means, I'm not accusing anyone, I'm just bringing it so that we can discuss it in an open meeting, so that we can kind of ease fears, because one thing I don't want to happen is for people to blow this situation up, because it seems like we're just having a record amount of rainfall, and it seems like something maybe is, as much as we want to blame somebody for this, as much as I want somebody else to pay for my damage, unfortunately, it's probably just gonna be something that I'm gonna have to pay for. So can we address this specific concern?
Well, the first thing I wanna say is, there is no threat to the big ditch, there is no concern whatsoever-
Thank you.
-of any breach to the big ditch, so let's lay that to rest right away. The second portion of that, the pumping issue, is, sounds very much like what Mr. Spears just brought up, and I can't speak to that, it sounds like he's gonna do some more investigation into it.
Perfect.
I'll have Scott Linda back in on that today, and he knows all the folks in flood control, oh, 'cause he used to run that, so we'll find out what's going on. Your other, what it could be also, is the water table is probably coming up, and that could be your problem instead of the pumps, but we'll find out.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks for the update.
You bet.
Thanks, Cody.
Uh-huh.
Who wants to start?
Vicki's gonna start?
Yeah. Hi, I am Vicki Roper, I'm the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas Director at the Kansas Children's Service League, and I'm gonna divide today into problem solution, and I have extra packets there as you come in for whoever wants those. And so we'll start with the problem. In your packet, on the left-hand side is the data. I was asked to bring the data, so we've got data from several different data sources, helping us to define what the problem is. Your top sheet is the, is DCF information that really compares Sedgwick County with the rest of the state, and you'll see that reports have risen for Sedgwick County higher than they have for the state, and reports screened in for investigation have risen more for Sedgwick County than they have for the state. Substantiations are indeterminate due to a definition change. Your next sheet is around statistics on child abuse homicides in Wichita from the Wichita Police Department. Early on, we have used Wichita Police Department data, Lieutenant Governor John Moore came to our first meeting, pulled me aside and said, "I would use Police Department data," and Tom Stoltz helped us, so this first several years of information is work that he has shared. In the statistics, we've had 20 child abuse fatalities between, or child abuse homicides between 2008 and 2019 today. All children were birthed to three, nine of the 20 perpetrators were a combination of mother and her boyfriend, or mom's boyfriend who acted alone, nine of the 20 perpetrators were non-biological relations to the child. In 12 of the 20 cases, mom was out of the house and relying on someone else to care for her child when the fatal event occurred. In 10 of 20 of the cases, we don't know, think there was DCF involvement before the fatality. The cases involved three main factors, mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and domestic violence. The triggering events were child crying, three, forced feeding, two, jealousy of a partner, two, wet pants, one, and roughhousing, one, and we kinda know that milestones in child abusing, you know, include the crying and the toilet training, so those were not a surprise. So that's that second group. The third area is Department for Children and Families, it looks like this, they just got this information, it is this fiscal year from July 1 to the end of January. Oops, and what they've found is that parental substance abuse ranks second, only after physical abuse as the reason for removal in Sedgwick County, whereas it ranks fifth statewide. So from that, you can see we are having substance abuse problem that's impacting our fatalities. The next is the Child Death Review Board, which is out of the Attorney General's office, and they're able to compare data in Kansas to data nationally, so this is Kansas data, not specifically Sedgwick County. In Kansas, the rate for infants is more than three times higher than other age groups, the maternal risk factors are young age, less than 12-years of education, and single parent. The household risk factors are non-biological caregiver in the home, the boyfriend piece, prior child abuse and neglect, substantiation, substance abuse, and low economic status. Many fatalities occurred when the primary caregiver was away from the home, often the single mom. Often, the child was cared for by the mother's paramour, that's a national term for boyfriend or, you know, girlfriend, or relative who was not the primary caregiver. The mother's paramour suspected perpetrator in 27% of child abuse homicides, and ACES are higher in Sedgwick County than in Kansas. So we'll move to that. Your next report is about ACES, and I don't know how much you all have heard around this, but the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention did about 15 years of data where they show that adverse childhood experiences that happened to someone birthed to 18 have a major impact on them as adults, in health, in mental health, in education, and in workforce trajectory, the biggest impact is really workforce trajectory. Underneath your packet is an ACE questionnaire, if you've never heard of this, we're not gonna ask people to share their results, but this will help you understand, you know, what this is by the questions that are there. And what we're seeing in Sedgwick County is that Sedgwick County adults with three or more adverse childhood experiences have 5.2 times greater odds of experiencing depression and five times greater odds of having 14 or more days of poor mental health in any month. So it's in the last month. And Wichita-Sedgwick County is higher than the state data on all that. Then the next piece is just the risk and needs assessment for Wichita from WSU, and I'll be quick on that. The rate of mental health-related discharges among youth in Sedgwick County increased by 27% in the time that they did their study between 2009 and 2014. Nearly 40% of Sedgwick County students indicated poor family management in 2011, 36% of students reported having severe family conflict, and on average, 25% of the state's domestic violence arrests occurred in Sedgwick County. Students in Sedgwick County are more likely than students in Kansas to indicate that they do not feel safe in their communities. Fewer students in Sedgwick County report feeling they have adults in their communities that encourage them to do their best. 60% of students across the state feel supported by the adults in their communities, while 50% in Sedgwick County, and that's all from the Communities That Care survey. Then moving to the right side of your packet is the solution and what people like the CDC and the Attorney General Child Death Review Board are saying needs to happen. I'm starting, this is just our brief information about the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, which is a coalition of 130 people from 60 or more agencies in Sedgwick County that came together in 2008 as a response to child abuse fatalities in this community. Then the next sheet tells a little bit about what is being happened on recent program highlights and what the different work groups of the coalition think the answer is. There are three work groups. Community Awareness is working on the Safe Haven Project, which many of you are probably involved with, which allows someone to relinquish a child up to 60 days old to a fire station, police station, county health department, office, or hospital, and not have criminal charges as long as there's no child abuse at the time of relinquishment, present at the time of relinquishment. And then they're trying to assure that area, school districts are reporting, as they are mandated reporters, they're working with media outlets around child abuse reporting and around childcare, they've identified childcare as a significant issue in Sedgwick County that we're seeing, that we're a manufacturing community, we have second and third shifts, which is where people are moving into jobs, we have a 3.4% unemployment rate in Kansas with 50,000 open jobs, and right now, 10,000 of those are in Sedgwick County. So we're moving people into positions rapidly and needing to provide supports for them to be able to be successful and stay there. I'll show you that childcare is one of the main things that the CDC is promoting right now. And then we are showing, raising of America and resilience to businesses and through the Junior League to kind of create a culture change, to get people on board with that. The Greater Wichita Fatherhood Coalition has recognized all along that we have a tremendous amount of perpetrators that are, you know, boyfriends, and trying to get agencies to be more father-friendly in their work, and engaging those dads into the work that they're doing with the family, and so there's been a lot of work happening there recently. And then real support is trying to get diapers, wipes, and formula into the, our primary zip code is the 67214 zip code and others to meet that need. The Wichita Kansas Champions for Children sheet that you have next is, we were testified, we testified before the Presidential Commission to Eliminate Child Abuse Fatalities in 2015, and we were featured as one of four stories in their final report, and we are the child abuse prevention story in their report. We're the only community in the country that recognized in real time that we had a problem with child abuse fatalities, and we are then the only community that moved forward on solutions in real time. Today, everybody recognizes there is a problem nationally, you know, with child abuse fatalities during the economic downturn. One of the differences is Wichita is still in the recession, according to the James Chung Report, so we're still seeing some of this. And then in the 2018 Child Death Review Report, they talk about domestic violence, drug environments, education of caregivers of young children, and education about signs of child abuse. Their recommendations are high-quality childcare, access to home visiting programs, and training child welfare professionals, and sharing critical information across units. What can be done about ACES is CDC, that's the last sheet, I think, on the right-hand side, and they say, "Mental illness and substance abuse treatment, high-quality childcare, sufficient economic supports for families with lower incomes, home visiting, parent training, intimate partner violence prevention, and family-friendly work." Diana?
Good morning. I'm Diana Shun, I'm the Executive Director of the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County, and I'm gonna bring just a little bit more of, turn it even more local, from what Vicki did, a great overview of local and state. So for those that may not be familiar, we have the opportunity to work with roughly 12 different agencies that are co-located within our facility to be able to assist in child abuse investigations with the coordination of services, therapy, and advocacy. So a little bit about our local statistics that I think you might find interesting, if you look at the third slide on the bottom of page one, you can see historically where our numbers come. You can see a slight drop in 2014 and in 2015, and even in the law enforcement reports in 2015 was a slight drop. I don't know that we have any significant reason that we can point to that in particular, but I do think that one of the important things is to look also at our cyber tips, and that's one of the areas that we do continue to see a significant rise in regards to internet crimes that are being reported and cases that are being analyzed in regards to that. And obviously, as technology is our friend, it can also be a very evil shift in many of our child abuse situations. So those are some of the things that we just look at from a number standpoint. My personal belief is that regardless of what the number is, there's always a largest percentage of our cases that are never coming forward, so whatever our number is, we know that there's a lot more out there that are not coming forward. And I know some communities will say, "Well, if we had, you know, lower numbers of child abuse, that must mean we're doing something right." And I would like to believe that that is a contributor to that, but I don't believe that that's probably the only thing we can look at, and the fact that lower numbers may mean that people are just not coming forward and reporting as much, and so, not to be the Debbie Downer, but that I think is the reality piece that we have to look at in regards to child abuse, knowing that a significant number, roughly 90%, in many of the research studies, are never coming forward from a report standpoint. So we really are just seeing the tip of the iceberg. Switching on to page two then, just looking in regards to the statistical shifts that we have seen, numbers of cases, again, I think you can just see from the numbers in the previous page. Age of offender would be another topic that I think is important for us to take a look at, specifically as we look at age of the offender in relation to sexual abuse categories. And one of the things that we see particularly in our programs is that in the last six quarters, 6% of all of our offenders are under the age of 13, and 10% are between the ages of 13 and 17. So we have a significant number of children that are acting out on other children, and that is one of the primary things that we are doing now from a new program standpoint, and if you see that next slide, we're, it's the Youth with Problematic Sexual Behaviors is the program that we are working on now. We have three therapists that are currently trained through the University of Oklahoma, they are meeting their final levels of fidelity to be able to implement the program completely, but we really focus on regards to the family system, cannot just be a child learning information and being instructed in better ways to protect themselves and to protect others, but it also needs to be a family system, and so that is one of the main focus areas that we have. We are the first program in the state of Kansas to be providing the Problematic Sexual Behaviors Program. Oftentimes, we still refer to youth as perpetrators, and that's one of the main shifts that we really look at, is that most of the time, children are acting out because there's other exposure available to them, whether that exposure has been that they've been previously abused themselves, they're observing or learning from other peers, or they're observing and learning from the internet is probably the most common reasons that we see children acting out on other children. Currently, we're able to serve children ages seven to 12, that's the education area that our therapists have, are in the process of meeting fidelity for, and in the future, we plan on also having them attend the courses that will be for ages four through six and ages 13 to 17. And I think that most of us don't wanna believe that we can have offenders that are four and six-years of age, and that's why, again, we really shift that terminology from offenders to children with problematic sexual behaviors. And so whether that's that they are acting out with other children in the home or acting out on other children, the intent and the purpose is really to be able to learn those boundary issues and have those hopefully much more ingrained into their lives so that they have a lot more safety for themselves and others that they are living with in most circumstances. So you can see on the bottom of page two, just from a nationwide level, of all the child advocacy centers nationwide, we have roughly 20 to 25% of the cases that we work are children on children cases, so that is a large number of our cases that we also do locally, and you can see even higher numbers nationally, the 23.2% in comparison to the last six quarters for us, which is roughly 16%. So a little bit lower, but again, that just looks at a small number in comparison to the National Children's Alliance numbers. So as I said, really working on healthy boundaries, safety plans, and caregiver support. On the top of page three then, and Vicki talked a little bit about this, but certainly the things that we also see are those co-occurrences, things are not happening in isolation. Domestic violence is oftentimes in connection with child abuse in the cases that we are working, and oftentimes in some of the national statistics, you can see upwards of 30 to 60% of the cases. So where there is domestic violence going on in the home, we have to be able to raise concern for child abuse going hand-in-hand in relation to that. Drug environments certainly are in other situation where we have significant concern in our community, whether it's the family that's caring for the child that is searching for drugs, whether they are themselves using drugs and not able to care for their child, where the child's needs take second-hand because of the drug itself is the primary focus. And then certainly, child sexual abuse, as we talked about, one of the things that we see also with many of our cases of children that have been sexually abused is the high-risk sexual behaviors, and that's not so much in acting out, it is a secondary trauma in relation to the abuse that they have already sustained. And so we really look at those risk factors of multiple sex partners, which obviously can lead to additional health concerns, and then ultimately, if not 100%, nearly 100% of our human trafficking cases have a history of child- to what we can do and what, where our areas of greatest need are. I'm going to skip the homicide rate information because Vicky's already covered that, and then just talk a little bit about the highest needs. I think what's the most important thing that we look at and we hear consistently in messaging is, what is predictable is preventable. And so as we look at the numbers, as we look at the cases that we are seeing, we have to continue to learn from that and figure out ways that we can be more effective in regards to predicting and preventing the abuse that is occurring. So affordable and accessible mental health services, all of the services that we provide at the Child Advocacy Center are free of charge, but we are a small number. No way possible can we take care of the nearly 2,300 cases that we saw this past year with four therapists. So our reliance on the community for mental health continues to be extraordinarily high. And unfortunately, that means that many of our children are referred, and they may wait two and three weeks, sometimes much longer than that, for the services that they need. And ultimately, in many of those cases, the crisis is now. Certainly not that the crisis won't still exist in three to four weeks, but we really, time is of the essence. Affordable and accessible substance abuse treatment, we have many families where the parents are interested or willing to consider treatment programs, but they're just not accessible. And if they don't have insurance and they don't have the right standards of what they need, we find a real lack in the system of being able to connect them into the services that they desperately need to be able to help lower some of the risk of the abuse possibilities that are going on in the home. Staff, I think that we all look at that, as we know the cases rise, so does the need, then, for us to be able to continue to staff those cases in an effective and efficient manner. Community education is always an ongoing need that we have, and I think that the awareness piece, although child abuse is not, you know, you're, the weather, we can talk about a lot easier than child abuse. It's much more comfortable, and that's okay, but the reality is, is that we do have to talk about child abuse. It's an important part of our community, it's an important part of our future. And so that's the pieces that we really try to focus on, is not only do I need to become aware of what child abuse is, but if I'm aware of it, what do I do with that information? And how do I act on it? And what is my responsibility? And then I would say, much like what Vicky said as well, affordable, high-quality childcare is a continuation of an issue that we see in many circumstances, the adverse childhood experiences as well. One other thing I would just touch on in the fact that we are also partnering with Wesley Medical Center and several other organizations, USD 259 and others, to be able to implement the no-hit zone. And that simply refers to the fact that we are encouraging parents to recognize that there are better alternatives than to hit your child. There's good research to be able to show that spanking really doesn't provide you with a positive outcome, and so what can we do in relation to that? And the no-hit zone really starts to focus much more on what do we, as observers, do to intervene in those situations where it may escalate to additional physical abuse? So you're shopping at Target and you see mom backhand the child because they're not behaving, what do you do as an intervener in that situation? And so it really helps us teach those opportunities of how can I better help de-escalate the situation and provide somewhat a safety net for the child in those particular circumstances? So if you or your agencies are interested in no-hit zone information and education, certainly that is something that we're available and willing to do for you as well. So I think we can both answer questions, if you have any.
Thank you for the presentation, Diana. The alarm, of course, there's a lot of data that's alarming, but it's age seven to 12, 6% under 13 years old, 10% above. But you only referenced at the end that your cooperation with USD 259 on the no-hit zone. But I assume that you guys are working with USD school districts everywhere?
Yes. There's a variety of things that we're doing with the, with the school systems anywhere we can in regards to not only mandatory reporting, but recognition of child abuse and a host of different kinds of other things. So as they, the school systems have really done a remarkable job of learning more about ACEs and the negative impact of what happens when children experience adverse childhood experiences. And so I think that that's another trend that we really see within USD 259 in particular, is really looking at those alternative ways of, so you have the child acting out in school, let's not just talk about behavior issues, let's talk about what's the root cause that brings those behaviors to light. So absolutely, those are partners on a regular basis for other things as well.
Okay. Other questions from the center? Anybody else have any questions?
I'll just conclude by, I think when we start, first started talking about this three or four weeks ago, there was a case, a child abuse death case, which I think concerned, I know it did the chairman and many of you. And I thought it was important to bring Diana and Vicky here because there are people who are experts in this field, and they are clearly both experts, that work on this every day. So it's not like we're not doing anything. It's tough, and there are many things that they went over here that are in county government's wheelhouse to some degree, mental health, some in the city's wheelhouse with childcare providers. Because if you ask people, "Why did you close your daycare?" Or, "Why aren't you doing childcare business?", they will tell you, "We've been regulated out." And it begins to be too much bureaucracy and red tape, and I think government has a role in that. So we need to take a look. By the same token, we want it regulated because you want good childcare. It's a real conundrum to some degree. But there are many things in here that are government's role. There are some in here that are clearly churches' role and parental role. But the first thing you have to do when you, as we come across these cases, these sensational cases that'll hit us in the face every few weeks, is you have to get the experts in and get the facts out. And they can make you feel good and bad at the same time. They make you feel good because you know they're working on it, and they've got a coalition and a community that they have touchpoints with. They make you feel bad because, like Mark Bennett, the numbers, when he talked to us in budget, the numbers, everything's going up. SINC cases and cases involving kids are going up. So they make you feel bad from that, but I think we just view that as a challenge. And we continue to support these guys and prop these guys up and help them and do whatever we can in county government to be part of the team. I do want us to be part of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention. I want the county to be an active role participant in that. I know that the sheriff has participated in the past, and, you know, DAs across the country all have passions. Mark Bennett's passion is kids. We're really lucky to have him as a DA. And I know Mark is part of that coalition as well. I want county government, either Tim or I, will set on that because of the mental health component of this. So that's, I think this is a good first step today, and I think that we ought to have these guys come back every once in a while and keep us up to speed on what's going on regarding data and what we can do to better support them, so.
I would like to thank the county for their role in this. We've got people even in the audience from the Health Department, from Comp Care, from the DA's office, I mean, just in, from lots of places that are really passionate about this, that have made a huge impact and that feel really strongly about the direction that we need to be going that have made a major contribution. So don't think that that's not the case, because we really appreciate their involvement and their role. They can get us data we can't get any other way, and they can get us into services and remove barriers that we can't get rid of any other way.
That's good news. All right. Tom, thanks.
I have a question, actually. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask a question. So the chairman, when he brought this up a few weeks ago, it was after that, that child death that was in the media pretty heavily. So he talked about potentially coordinating with DCF so we could have some type of input into our system, you know, when we're dealing with an ongoing situation perhaps, or something that's been more of a chronic situation versus a first-time visit type of thing. I'm curious, one of the first sheets you gave us was statistics on child abuse fatalities 2008 to 2019. Is that just Wichita only?
Well, on that first stat sheet, it's Sedgwick County.
This one here?
Oh, that's Wichita only. That's the Wichita Police Department data. So that's Wichita only. This is Sedgwick County.
Well, it's not Sedgwick County. There are 20 child abuse fatalities in Sedgwick County between 2008 and 2019.
It's Wichita only.
Wichita?
Yeah. It's Wichita Police Department data.
And the word fatalities is maybe not the best word. You also use the word homicides when you read that. So is it homicides?
Yes.
Okay.
The police department calls them homicides. The US Department of Health and Human Services with the Presidential Commission calls them fatalities. So we've most recently presented testimony to them, so sorry.
One thing is, a couple of things that are on this list, I think it'd be interesting to note, that would be, how many of these cases had the W, so this is WPD, but certainly, once the homicide was discovered and they began to investigate and potentially charge and prosecute the perpetrator that did the crime, WPD obviously was involved at that point. Curiously, though, was WPD involved in any of these cases before the homicide happened? And that's what we want to find out. And if that's true, how many of these 20 cases had WPD touched in some way before the homicide had happened? And that, because here's what I'm getting to, what, you know, what the chairman was talking to, talking about is getting DCF to somehow share, if you will, at a very high level, you know, maybe not the details, but at a very high level, that this is a situation that they're aware of. Maybe we're not involved, the WPD may not be involved in it, because maybe it's just DCF only. And there's cases I'm sure that DCF gets involved in that, any law enforcement agency may not have any, any type of, any interface with that situation when DCF possibly does. And so they have probably more extensive records than law enforcement does. And whether they're willing to share or not, I think that's a, that's a great question. I'm not sure we'll ever get there, we'll see. But I'm curious, if we have that data on the front end, why are we not collecting that data and flagging our own files in some way to track those situations when we interface with these families before the homicides happen? So that's really my question.
It's really a you question. My understanding is that, yes, DCF and the Wichita Police Department are moving forward to try to do that. I met with DCF last week, they shared with me, yes, they're trying to do that. They're even working on a grant to try to make that possible, try to make that happen. And the grant is really between the Wichita Police Department and DCF. And WSCAT, Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, is just ordaining, I mean, saying that it's a good thing to do and it's a good direction to go to since we're the ones featured in the Presidential Report. And this is going to, this grant's going to the US Department, well, to a department that will recognize that, that's written in all through the grant. So hopefully, that will happen.
You're saying what will happen is DCF will find a way to help?
They're working on a way to try to do that.
And even if that doesn't happen, what I'm, my question is, I think we have, we have the data on the front end before even, maybe before DCF even gets called in, possibly WPD is already involved, or our sheriff's office is already involved. So we've got, we've touched the situation in some ways, parallel with them or possibly even before them. Sometimes then without us, but many times, I'm sure, we're involved and they're involved at the same time. So we have, we have the ability to essentially create our own record in those cases where we have law enforcement involved in that. So I'm curious as to, is that being discussed? Is there some, whether DCF chooses to share the information back to the county or not, is the county recognizing the fact that we have an option as law enforcement officers connect to these situations to essentially keep, you know, keep a history, if you will, of some of their interfaces?
I think everybody looks at the table. They said they had 30 law enforcement in there two weeks ago, working on this. So I think there's certainly working, you've got veteran people at DCF in Sedgwick County right now that have been in this field for decades that are working, you know, on all of that. The data that I gave you from the Wichita Police Department, you know, they can only release as much data as not, will not interfere with the trial. And so we probably haven't done a good job of going back after the trial and correcting that or adding more data that we can utilize for prevention. But obviously, their ability to connect and work that case upfront is critical. So I'm hopeful that that will be happening more.
To speak just a little bit more on the issue that you're talking about, I had an opportunity to sit down late last week with some representatives from Wichita Police. They wanted to meet and talk about a plan they had. And what it involves is data analytics, and they are working with Wichita State on a grant. They've got a couple of different tracks that they're working on grant-wise. One of them is in conjunction with Wichita State. The other, they're working on more by themselves, and they're seeing which one pans out. What they're hoping to do is get this grant that will pay for a software solution that will allow them to interface with multiple different databases, DCF, other law enforcement agencies, pull in data points related to domestic violence and child abuse and all those types of things. And then the piece that will matter most is the analytics piece, where they will filter that information and analyze it and look for patterns. If they have a person or persons who have, they'll set the parameters, but say three, three contacts with DCF within a month and contact with law enforcement, it will trigger an alert, and they will disseminate that information to the appropriate law enforcement areas, whether it's county or city or wherever, so that those officers working those areas are aware that this family at this address has had X number of DCF contacts within a certain period of time, or number, X number of domestic violence contacts with law enforcement within a period of time, so that they've been, so that whenever the officer gets sent to that address, it will notify them of that history and put them on a heightened level of awareness to look into those issues while they're present. So that's something that Wichita's working on. They've only met, they said they've met with the DA's office to discuss it at a high level. They met with me briefly to discuss at a high level. They said they have not talked to the sheriff yet. So they, but they are working with Wichita State on a grant.
Well, assuming that we, assuming we get to a successful coordination and partnership on this type of thing, that's, that's great. If we hit a brick wall and we get stopped because there's maybe an unwillingness to share data, maybe there's some concerns about privacy, if that happens, I guess we need to probably visit this again. I think there's other options we ought to be talking about. We probably could do some things independent of DCF if we absolutely had to. And of course, DCF, and I just want to share, it's very, very challenging. I appreciate what they try to do. Hindsight's always easier. You know, aggressively taking children away from parents is, is not something we probably want to see happen. On the other hand, we want to make sure every, every abused child is getting the help they need. And so hindsight's always much easier in dealing with these children's issues. And I feel sorry for a very complex challenge that they do the very best they can, but sometimes things aren't handled maybe the best they could be. On the other hand, we don't want to, you know, maybe overreact on sometimes maybe there's nothing really wrong, and then children are taken from parents that are, you know, everything's fine in the home. So there's a very, it's a very difficult, they're a very difficult agency to really be, do a perfect job. There's no such thing as perfect, I guess. You're going to err one side or the other. And if you do make the error, the question is, how do you err? And so these high-profile cases certainly bring us to light, and I want to say, I thank, I thank those people that work in that very difficult agency. And certainly, I think everybody here agrees, everybody in the room, I'm sure, agrees that child abuse is something we want to like to stop as much as we possibly can. I am also curious, on this ACE score, is there data that talks about, and I'd like to know maybe this over time, what is, is this data collected up and, you know, regionally, like Wichita, Sedgwick Counties, Kansas?
Yeah.
Is there averages that we can look at and find out, you know, how we rank with other urban counties, for example? Some of these, some of the stats in here, they compare us with Kansas. I'm not sure that's necessarily the right comparison, because urban counties sometimes have more, you know, maybe there's more drug dependency, for example. I don't know that's true or not, maybe there's some correlation, maybe there's not, but it'd be nice to see it, Kansas versus urban counties, and maybe even other parts of the, other parts of the country, finding how we compare. But reading this list here, if I was, if I was going to summarize it, basically, you know, families that are struggling with domestic relationships, food, substance abuse, and neglect, you know, one of the questions here, I would rephrase it probably as an, as an issue of neglect, perhaps. I'm curious if there's, you know, who's doing, where's the low score? What are they doing differently than what we're doing? Where's the high score? You know, I'd like to know how we compare with other areas. And looking at that list there, it looks to me like there's, what I'm aware of right now, it seems like there's probably, so almost everybody would probably check one or two of these boxes, I'm guessing.
Right. It's not till you get to three, and lately it's been four or more, that you're starting to see a difference, a big difference in...
probably, almost everybody would probably check one or two of these boxes, I'm guessing.
Right. It's not till you get to three, lately it's been four or more, that you're starting to see a difference, a big difference in all of this. So, you're right on all that. We have mapped it regionally, we have mapped it by county in this state. This Centers for Disease, this is a Centers for Disease Control-driven assessment, and they have looked at national data across, the most recent was across 23 states, it came out in July. So, I can get that to you. Obviously, Lion Dot County and Sedgwick County have similar data. I think that's true across the country, that urban centers are having similar data. The test is what you've got there, but a lot of research is being done, adding categories to urban areas to try to figure out what's happening in urban settings that's different and why those scores are higher. So you are absolutely correct.
Do we offer any type of parenting training? People want to learn how to handle some of these situations in the home. Is there any type of programs available people can get involved in, maybe no cost or free?
The CDC would prioritize probably home visiting. You're seeing all of our fatalities, our births to three. That's a voluntary program that's able to have somebody come alongside a family and be able to do parent training through home visiting in that age group. Then there's regular parent training programs, such as Triple P or the Incredible Years, are probably the highest evidence-based models at this point. A lot of those are going away as budget cuts have come to Sedgwick County from 2008 to 2019. We're trying to pull them back in sort of some parts of other evidence-based models, like our Crisis Nursery Program, which was born out of this whole effort, where families can place children when they're going into the hospital to deliver, or going for job training, when they're, they don't have family in the area that can take older children. So, the short answer to that is yes and no. Parent training programs are struggling right now. It looks like there's some funding coming down to address that nationally, in part because of the CDC's work of, we've got to have this. This is important. We need to do this.
Okay.
Would you say, though, that if mental illness and abuse is treated, that other issues might fall in line?
Yeah, I think that, that's huge. I mean, I think all of that is a huge, you know, part of this, is dealing with the underlying underpinnings of mental health and substance abuse. And you see that on the CDC. And, you know, I'm not taking what the CDC says lately. I'm boots on the ground for them and have been for six years now. And their evidence base is way up to here compared to everything else. And so, when they say substance abuse and mental health needs to be addressed in order to deal with child malt treatment, it does.
Commissioners, how can best help programming for parents that are in services specific to how to help them raise their children as well? Sometimes they're working with families to help them understand how to raise a child that is experiencing mental illness, and they're also helping families understand how to parent through their own mental illness as well.
That is true. There's, mental health has really started adding parent training to the work that they're doing a lot too, because they're seeing that void kind of out there.
And then Healthy Babies is another example, the program where they're working with those families, the children zero to three.
No, I just want to make one more comment, and you're welcome to comment back, but I'd like to differentiate between a parent who gives a couple swats to their toddler on the rear end, okay, for misbehaving and trying to train and discipline that child and get him in a better situation there, versus someone who backhands a child in a grocery store.
Right.
I think we understand what abuse is. You know, a parent that paddles their child, their toddler, trying to teach them to obey, shouldn't be in fear of the government. You know, and whereas actually someone, a representative actually decided to even address this legislatively and was made fun of nationally, and I just want to just say that-
I was part of it.
You know, I just want to say that, you know, I think that parents live in fear of the government. If you really want to have, the government have access to children, you're going to have to address that situation plainly. And I think right now, by not addressing what is and isn't abuse when it comes to paddling a toddler, you create fear. And I think it needs to be addressed with policy and procedure that says, this is not abuse.
It's probably coming, I think that the American Academy of Pediatrics, what's changed, is the American Academy of Pediatrics on November 5th, actually, they came straight to Wichita after that and spoke at our governor's conference. So all their media takes were in Wichita, came out and said, no spanking, the research is not supporting spanking. You know, that kids grow up with spanking, be more violent themselves. So that's where the research is going. So I think we're just starting to really research and figure out what, you know-
That may be true. I was actually, I was actually spanked by my principal in my junior high school, okay? So-
We're one in 19.
I was a bad boy, apparently. And, you know, I grew up, my parents, my parents actually were, were alcohol, my dad's an alcoholic. I grew up without food. We had some serious problems in my home, okay? So I have an ACE of score, at least four, maybe five, on this list.
I think-
Here's my point, though. I think that you're talking about best practices, new psychological, new psychological, you know, efforts and understandings and things. That may be very well. The problem, the problem I see is, there's an awful lot of parents out there like myself. I come up, you know, my upbringing and everything. I don't view, I don't view paddling a child as abuse, okay? I mean, with a reason. I'm not talking about bruising them and threatening them, and that's abuse, okay? I understand that. But a parent that paddles their child, especially toddler, you know, someone who's very young, learning not to touch the hot stove or whatever it is, okay? You can imagine reasons why parents might say, you know, don't go into the street, okay? You teach a child. Parents have to teach their children. We want parents to be parents. That cannot be viewed the same as a child, as a parent who's literally physically abusing and leaving marks and bruising their child. That is absolutely abuse. And we all know the difference. But parents out there that, you know, paddle in very small ways, they're small, they're young children perhaps, that cannot be called the same thing as abuse. And we've got to, please hear me, we have to differentiate between those types of abuse. And so, I'm just, I think there's a lot of parents who are living in fear. And if you really want them to access the ideology that you're trying to promote, we've got to be willing to understand there's a difference in those two things.
Jim, I have to agree with you, and thank you for sharing that. I have to 100% agree with you. There was one time my daughter, my ex-husband was standing at the meat counter, and he was looking at these hamburgers, and my daughter bit him, and he smacked her on the head with the meat. It was just a reaction. So, I mean, I wonder, when you go back to talking about in the grocery store, you know, at what level is it okay to step in? And I get what you're saying. Like, I totally get what you're saying. I don't believe in hitting children, I don't believe in that. But at what point is it like, we live in a different society than when our parents grew up, right? They got swatted and everything was okay. So, I mean, I think we just have to, how do we, I mean, we're not going to solve spanking here today, as pediatrician. We're not going to solve anything today. But I just can't reiterate enough how alcohol, mental abuse, those kinds of things, I mean, if you're not drunk, you're probably not going to hit your kid, right? If you're not on meth, you're probably not going to run away from the cops and kill two people. I mean, it's that kind of thing. So, I appreciate what you guys do, and I appreciate you sharing that, Jim. That's-
And even the terminology, the word hitting, it sounds abusive, and it is. Hitting says, you know, you're hitting somebody out of anger, okay? You react physically out of anger. A parent correcting their young child by paddling them is a very controlled, loving response, perhaps. You're trying to train them, teach them right and wrong. You know, there's, it's a difference in terminology. You use the word hitting. I just want to say, I feel sorry for parents who, you know, and by the way, you're welcome to speak to this too, but there's even, you know, I think anonymous ways to call in and maybe talk about your neighbors, for example. And they come in and they take these children away, and then you have to spend potentially quite a bit of money and demonstrate to the government that you have a right to get your kids back. And so, that's the other, there's two sides of this. And I said before, hindsight's 20/20. It's easier, you know, to know later on, perhaps, you know, but they're going to err on the side of trying to protect that child. And I appreciate that. And I know they have the best of intentions. But there's times where the kids are taken away from parents and then given back. That does happen, right? And so the parents have to go through a lot of trouble. They have to go parenting classes, they've got to, they have to show up at their home, have it inspected, they've got to, there's an investigation, maybe have to get a lawyer involved. A lot of expenses. And so, there's a general distrust of government that that could happen to anybody. Really great parents are in fear of that type of thing, someone mischaracterizing them and making a call on them. They're great parents, and this type of situation could happen. Because we're so focused on trying to protect that child, and we need to do that. We want to protect that child. So, there's no way to perfectly, to perfectly deal with just the really problem children that need to have that protection, those are truly being abused, and remove just only them. And every, you know, to do this perfectly is an impossible goal. But, there are so many parents out there that are doing everything really right, and they still live in fear of the government. Because they don't know that somebody might misunderstand something they've done, they've done, or they might be mischaracterized. And then that puts them on their defense. And that is such a big fear for parents.
I would just say, I have more than 25 years of working in the child abuse field, it would be highly unlikely that an isolated incident of parents disciplining children in a manner that doesn't cause injury, those kinds of things, would be considered abuse from an investigation standpoint. The largest, largest majority of those, if not nearly all of them, would already be screened out and never assigned for investigation. I'm not saying it could never happen, I'm just saying it's extraordinarily unlikely. I do think it's important for parents just to understand alternate ways for them to be able to discipline their children, and recognize that there is research to be able to back that up. And no one's saying, I'm telling you how to raise your children. What I am saying is, I want you to be educated about what options you have available, and how can we as a community work together to be able to keep children safe. Because when children are taught, children don't hit children, and children don't hit adults, adults don't hit children, and adults don't hit adults, we learn from that entire environment of protecting children from child abuse and recognizing domestic violence. And because those two go hand in hand so closely, it's a package deal. And again, I think that there's many, many different ways that we can teach folks how to parent. I'm not going to tell you how to do that. I'm just saying there's options out there. And I do think that I recognize that some people may live in fear, but I don't believe that that's probably a valid fear for them to really be living in. But that's my personal experience.
Here's the deal. We hear stories on both sides. These cases of these children being clearly abused and even killed, this is horrible. And we're trying to address that in a very effective way. And I think that's a great conversation this morning. But we hear people on the other side who say, look, I'm a great parent, I've done nothing wrong, and I got mischaracterized. Or going, maybe parents go into a divorce and they use the government essentially to, you know, to make false allegations against each of the two spouses or whatever. These things happen, and there are stories out there. And that's why I think this is such a very, very difficult topic. I, you said, if no one has any, any, very young children are very hard to investigate, I'm sure, because they can't maybe explain things very well. But if there's not physical, if there's no, if a parent just simply paddles their child and it's not abusive, you're not going to take that child away. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That needs to be clarified, because I think that's what people, in my opinion, that's not, that's not, that's not the same thing as what I think we all know as, you know, clearly defined abuse, when someone is reacting with anger and is hitting this child in all kinds of violent ways. That's not, that's not the same thing as-
And we have 65,000 reports coming in every year or more, and only 2,000 are substantiated. So, you know, they get screened out. And if you look at the DCF report, it gives you the reasons for out-of-home placements, and it's not that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to ask those questions. I really appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Glenda.
Good morning, commissioners and management team. I just want to say, thank you. I enjoyed listening to that. Corrections has partnered with Kansas Children's League to offer parenting classes, ACEs in community corrections in the adult side. And we also offer parenting classes in the juvenile programs for our parents that need some guidance in addressing adolescent behavior.
So, this morning, I'm here to talk to you about community corrections and their budget. We have some concerns that I want to bring forward and talk about. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so, to begin with, the Department of Corrections, for 30-plus years, has been receiving detention, it's called Juvenile Detention Facilities Fund, we call it the JDFF Fund, for construction, renovation, remodeling, or operational costs for a detention facility. That was by statute, KSA 794803. And this funding would come to us, oh, approximately $200,000 annually, and we would receive that. However, in 2017, that law was changed, and the funding now goes to alternatives to detention funds, which we don't see any more funding for. And so, the reason I'm bringing this to your attention is, those monies were used to purchase food for our detention facility. And so, when that funding stopped, it's caused us a little bit of a trickle-down effect in our juvenile detention and medical costs. And I'll start with the medical costs. As you can see by this next slide, our medical costs over the last few years have increased. They've increased for several reasons. One, because we entered into a new contract with WellPath or Correct Care Solutions at the time. That was a more collective, comprehensive medical service. We had KU Medical, and we did an RFP, and KU did not come back with a bid. And we were asking for actually additional services, which included just medical, medication distribution, because my staff used to have to distribute the medications. Also, to get a lower price for medications, and, for example, also x-rays. We would have to send clients out for x-rays, and they can now come in and do them. So we had some expended costs for lab charges. KU was doing a lot of STD tests on every youth that was coming into detention, so those costs spiked. Skip closed, and I'm going to back up even more. The Ranch closed in 2014, and at that time, the Ranch shared costs as well with our KU medical provider. And then, the Ranch closed in 2014. And then in 2017, when Skip closed, again, they shared in the costs of our medical provider. And so now, the cost is only split between JDF and JRF. So those costs went up. And we also have food costs that have gone up. As you'll see, from 2016 to 2018, the food contract, and mind you, it's not purchasing prepared foods, it's just purchasing a food contract, the food that we make. So in 2018, we had an expanded food service, because we had Scope come, we started delivering food for Scope, and for the JFS Evening Reporting Center, they are getting food. And that was an extended cost. In 2019, we're right now in the middle of an RFP process to look at a new food contract that could be a 1 to 8% increase. The other adjustment we made in this year was Scope's food is now charged to CompCare's budget, so it's no longer getting charged back to us. And so that has helped a little bit in 2019. So we have two areas of increased costs. One is for our medical contract, and so we are trying to, we are asking for a medical decision package of an increase- decision package, um, of an increase of $172,683, and a food purchase contract of $200,000, um, from our requested budget of, of 2020. And these are estimated based upon current expenses right now, in the new, um, contracts that we're looking at. Um, we're in the middle of an RFP, um, or a contract negotiation with our medical provider, because that contract actually ends December of 2019 this year. So we have, um, a department decision package of $372,682, split between food and medical. So we arrived at that, um, request, but what I'm bringing forward to you is that we're talking about, uh, we get general fund money, um, each and every year, and have for the last 10 years, um, for adult res and, um, adult intensive supervision. Um, basically, we get 250,000 for adult res and 575,000, um, in general fund for AISP. Just a few facts, um, KDOC funding has continued to decline over the last five years, and I passed out a little flyer that, a handout that shows that, uh, decline, and it's been declining about $100,000 a year. And like I said, Sedgwick County has been funding both adult res and AISP, um, with a little bit of funding, um, over the years. Adult res is really not a mandatory program, but it is an authorized program. And because it's authorized, the state does give us money for it. They give us about 1 point, almost 1.2 million for that program, but that does not take care of all of the financial needs of that program. AISP is also a mandated program, um, by KSA 755291, and it is funded by the state, and we get about, um, 2.3 million for that program. But, it's not enough funding to actually support that program by itself as well. Um, both adult res and work release programs are connected because they're in a shared building, so they have shared costs. Um, when Skip was in that program, they, uh, set that up to sort of support each other, so they help pay for the rent, um, whatever expenses that they have, and they share some of those costs. So when Skip went away, work release came in place, and so they both kind of help each other. Adult res uses client revenue every year to sustain itself, um, and they contribute, um, adult res, um, revenue is about, um, 270,000 a year, uh, and AISP gets about 245,000 in client revenue. Sedgwick County Community Corrections is the largest corrections agency in the state, and I bring that to mind, because when you look at Sedgwick County, and then you look at the second-largest community corrections agency, that would be Johnson County, we are 60% larger than Johnson County. And so when you're trying to look at what's happening in other counties, and how it compares to Sedgwick County, excuse me, and you look at Johnson County, their adult res program, they do serve more people, but they, it's not all of just their clients, and they're at about a ADP of 145,000. Their county supplements their program by 835,000. Their AISP program, which is very small compared to ours, and ours, our program is at 1,560, 40, 60 clients per month, and Johnson County is at 465 ADP. They supplement their, um, program by 1.4 million. Um, so there's, you know, the only closest comparison that I have for you, we, um, while we don't, we are 60% larger, we don't get through KDOC, um, the same 60% increase, it's more like a 40% difference. AISP, um, uh, and adult res personnel costs exceed our KDOC awards by about $717,000, um, which is a lot, and that's in just personnel. And like I said, we use our client revenue, and we use some of the general fund money to pay for those positions. So, if we were to take some of the general fund money away from adult res or AISP to, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, of about the impact that it would have if we lost that. And it would be a decrease of about seven FTEs. With that in mind, um, our ISOs would have to take on larger caseloads. Um, their caseloads right now are, um, around 25, and it, this would increase it to about 35, that's a 40% increase. And our, that's for Level 1, that's our more severe clients. The 2s, 3s, and 4s caseloads, which are between 5 and 40, would increase by 65, which it would be a, um, much higher, um, 63% increase. Supervision would be, um, less intensive. So, the whole purpose of, of adult intensive supervision is to do a lot of one-on-one with client, to supervise them, their felonies, they're, these are your very serious offenders, these are the ones that, excuse me, Dr. Ward talked about in his budget presentation. Um, we're seeing a lot more increase in crime, about 47%, and these are the criminals that Community Corrections actually oversees. Otherwise, they would be going to prison. Um, we would see an increase in arrests, we would increase in technical violations, court hearings, and ultimately, that would be jail or prison time increase. Reducing the individual face-to-face time between client and ISOs is also a, um, bigger risk to public safety. If we were to, uh, reduce funding for adult residential, again, you would have, um, seven ISO positions that would cause caseloads to increase on the AI- AISP side. You could have a potential, um, reduction in adult residential beds. Um, that would also limit judicial discretion, limits graduated sanctions, uh, programming alternatives. ISOs would actually have to work evening hours, because they would have to see the clients that are in, um, the adult res program, and that work during the day. You would see an increase in prison time for clients. You would reduce the individual face-to-face time between clients and ISOs. Specialized programming that they offer at adult res, like the workforce development, would decrease. With that decrease, you might see a decrease in employment, and I believe they have an 89% employment rate right now. Revenue would also decrease, and we rely on revenue to support these programs as well. You would see an increase in public safety risk. And we could also see a reduction from KDOC, who have been funding our adult res program for, um, 10-plus years. It's, has stayed at the same rate, one, almost 1.2 million, and that's never increased. That by itself is a problem, but it's not a mandated program, so, um...
Glenda, do you see a potential for people who work here to find someplace else to work, because they're overworked?
Oh, absolutely. So we have some discretionary programs. These, again, are programs that are not required by the state. Um, we have a juvenile residential facility at 1.6 million. We have pre-trial services program, which is at 923,000. Um, the work release, uh, is 1.9 million. The Judge Riddell Boys and Girls Alternative Program is at 300,000, and Drug Court at These programs, you can see, um, based upon, juvenile residential has a 70% success rate, their per diem cost is 167 per day, the number of clients they serve, uh, in a year, and the reimbursement that we get for that program, and it's considered a reduction in jail or detention population, mostly detention for kids. Pre-trial services program has a 57% rate, um, its per diem, it's a very low costly, uh, cost, costing program at $7.10. They serve about 1,400 clients a year, they get, um, about 7,500 for reimbursement. And I will say, that program that was started, um, oh, about six years ago, um, has, um, increased. It started out with about 250 was the capacity size of that program, and today, we're at 435. They are overcapacity, um, in the pre-trial services. Work release, um, which just started, um, in last year, um, they've had a 55% success rate. The per diem cost is 4490, uh, a day, um, they've served already 484 clients, and they've received 196,000 in reimbursement. Um, and of course, it's a reduction in jail. Um, that program is, um, doing really well, um, to reduce the number of clients that go into the jail. And right now, I do not have a, um, waiting list for any of the male beds, and I have one female waiting, um, oh, for a bed in that program. The Judge Riddell Boys and Girls Alternative Program has a good, very good success rate at 85%, um, no real per diem cost, they've served 325, all these numbers are from 2018. We don't get reimbursement, and, um, while indirectly they may reduce detention, it really enhances the kids' and the ability to be successful in that program. So it's, uh, it really is, helps in the increase of getting off probation and being successful and productive, and going back to school and doing the things that we want our kids to do. Drug court, you have to have a specific client criteria to be in that program. Their success rate is a little bit lower at 49%. The per diem rate is $22.78, they serve about 170 clients, they get about 15,000 in reimbursement, and it is a reduction for jail and detention. What I will say about drug court, um, it's a very long, um, 18 to 24-month program. Um, they work with the courts, the DA's, CompCare, to be, to help clients be successful and get off drugs, and, or their addiction, and solve their addiction problems, so they could be successful. It's one of our programs that we're using to help with our drug problem that's very high in Sedgwick County. So, um, but it's also limited to capacity. You know, they're, um, they're at 126, I believe, today. So, the B O C C has some options here. Um, option A would be to approve, um, the Department of Corrections decision package for 350, 372,682 with annual incremental new contract increases for medical and food, which is kind of what's got us into this problem, is it, those numbers have increased every year, and we don't get an, an increase, we've actually lost funding over the, the last, in 2017, that helped with some of those costs. And continue to support adult ISP and adult res with general funds. That's option A. Option B would be to reduce the general fund for AISP, transfer, um, to, transfer funds to JDF, JRF, to offset the increased costs by 372,682 for medical and food, and reduce AISP personnel by seven FTEs. Option C would be the same thing, only the reduction would be in adult residential. And option D could be to eliminate one of the discretionary programs that we, that I talked about.
Commissioners, I'll just add on to the backend of this. Lindsay and Lorian and I are coming to your offices individually as we talk about budget in general. We have eight or nine items to hit you at a high level with. We will add this to the list. I don't know, we need a decision point from you today on either of these options. I would invite you to ask Glenda any technical questions that you have on this report, uh, to position us for that discussion later this week.
I guess that would have been my question. Why didn't we happen to come and meet with us individually or in groups of two, to talk about this, instead of in this format? This doesn't seem like the best format to do it, and with the chairman now.
Yeah. Um, I, I think if, if we want that to happen, if we want to get further into the weeds individually...
Well, because I, because I have a lot of questions just about the reasons behind KU and stuff, and I don't want all this to be public like we're...
Sure.
...throwing our partner under the bus.
Right.
Because of that, so, I think...
I think, I think this was, I think to answer your question, during the, the normal budget meetings, I think we had, even staff had some confusion over this, the funding issues here, so we wanted to firm that up, give it to you in this format, and now perhaps behind the scenes, as we talk about many other budget issues that we face, uh, talk and probe this more, before we go back out public with it again, uh, here later in June, so...
When were we made aware that the Department of Corrections was going to send less?
Uh, you mean, in the, after they changed the law in 2017? It was probably in the fall, we got a letter saying that it had changed.
In the fall of '17?
Mm-hmm.
But the main...
And, and, and that money, we thought maybe they would send it to us as a JDAI alternative. Um, the state did not do that, they've not sent any money out at all, so...
But the main driver is the health, um...
Health cost increase, and less of, less partners to help with those costs. Um, because like I said, when JRBR went away, and then when Skip went away, they helped with some of those costs. And then, when we got the new contract, um, for medical, there were two, I believe, two, um, uh, pe- uh, agencies that actually, um, uh, bid for the medical contract, and Correct Care Solution, I believe, is the lowest bid. So, um, and it, it was 42,000 a month, I believe, is what it came to. I believe the other one was about 43,000.
How often do the ISOs interface with their clients?
Weekly.
Weekly?
Weekly, and if not more than that.
I mean, there's some that maybe require more, more time, and some of the less, or is it always...
Yes.
But don't the average is weekly?
Depends on, it depends on if, what level they're on, and I have Jay here, but, um, Level 1, those clients that are, um, you know, sometimes have, um, they have a very serious criminal, um, issue, and so the ISO, depending on what it is, might actually spend more time with them.
Well, I, um, have we, have we, have we studied these programs to look for any types of efficiencies? We can, we can try to do anything to provide the higher levels of service with our current funding? Have we looked for things we can do to change anything to try to make, be a little more fiscally efficient perhaps? Is that, is that, we, we, we looked at things that way?
Well, we can't, we, I believe that we have. Um, and, and I went back and looked at kind of Johnson County, because I wanted to see how many, um, FTEs they have... how many um FTEs they have for their population versus our population, and we're at thirty-nine FTEs and they're at thirty-one, and we have sixty percent more clients.
Okay.
I, I can't help but say that we are understaffed.
Yeah, I think we are too, and I'll just make a, I'll just make a general statement here. Gen- I, I think that, that these programs are cheaper than, these programs are cheaper than incarceration. You have a lawyer pages here?
Yeah, I think the jail is about seventy-two dollars a day.
So, you know, I, I think these are all great programs, I want to see them all, all be successful and thrive, we need to fund them. I think it's cheaper for us to do that, even with funding, you know, in other words, make this a priority in our budget, we need to find the funds to, to fund these programs because I think it's cheaper than incarceration. Uh, there's an old saying, you pay me now or pay me, pay me more, pay me more later, you know? The idea that we, by not addressing these, the, by not having these programs, it will cost taxpayers more money. And so, I think we're, it's imperative to, to fund these things to the right levels, be efficient if we can, you know, try to make sure we're, we're doing everything we can to, 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 you know, to pinch every penny, but at some point, these programs are, are very effective and very necessary, and actually are the right thing to do versus incarceration. So, I'm very supportive of, of whatever it takes to keep these programs uh moving, and uh, that's just my personal opinion, but um, you know, I think we, we looked at JRBR, for example, trying to find efficiencies out there. There seemed to be some of those things were more difficult than other things, but there were some things we could do to save some money, and there was a little bit of an unwillingness on the county's part to implement some of those ideas. And uh, as a consequence, we, the county just chose to, to defund the program and kill it, and I think that was a mistake. These programs, let's keep them going, let's, let's find deficiencies if there are any, but that's, my opinion is, let's get, let's uh, let's fund these, you know, whatever level we need to, need to, to make them work. And um, that's my position, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
How many, how many, do you guys um capture how many veterans you serve? So, in your pre-trial services, your work release, your adult detention, do you capture that data? The reason why I ask is, in Johnson County, they are doing a veterans court and these specialty courts, I'm sure you understand, I mean, they didn't work, right? So, um, given budgetary, you know, given all the money in the world, um, you know, what are your thoughts on that? Do you have any opinion on that? Do you think that it would be something that we should explore?
Um, we don't capture that data. Um, Jay, I'll let Jay.
I would just say that we, no, I'm sorry, Jay Holmes, that'd be Director of Adult Corrections Programs, and we do capture that data on our intake information sheet, but it's not data that we collect.
Not collected.
So, that's information that's shared to the individual intensive supervision officers who then, uh, you know, try to get them in contact with the VA Department for whatever services they would be eligible to apply for.
And I would just reiterate, there are three areas that we need to be very concerned about, and that is the substance abuse, the mental health, um, what's going on in mental health, and actually, the domestic violence. Um, we did apply um for a grant with um the WPD to sort of get a um, uh, program together, and we did not, through the Attorney General's Office, and we did not get that, but those are some, three areas that I'd say we really need to concentrate on in Sedgwick County.
Lynn, would you talk a little bit about uh what is going on with the state mandated programs and professional, corrections professionals who are working on, working with the legislature on funding increases?
Yes, um, so, um, we, we have a, an advisory board, um, and we've obviously brought these, this information to them as well, so they're fully aware of our funding issue. We um are going to send a letter to um KDOC and uh ask for an increase. I ask every year for an increase, um, but I've been denied, so, um, the next step would be to have our advisory board um draft a letter and request funding. And then, of course, I think I've talked to all the commissioners about and uh having a letter also go up. And then, I think the next step would be moving to the legislature on a legislative platform to ask for increased funding. You know, we're talking about um very set funding and um the um adult residential facility has been around for quite a while, and that funding hasn't changed one bit. Well, you know, things go, costs go up, and um the, the bottom line is, they're expecting more and more for the counties to um pick up what they aren't willing to do.
Since CJCC only meets quarterly, is that, is that the board you're talking about?
Um, no, the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I think, personally, I'll, I'll need a lot more information before I could weigh in, either way, on, similar to what Michael was referencing, so, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? All right, what else? Okay, may I have anything to add? Questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, have a good week.